The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office (920-967-3608), contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website. Or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order at 6:01 if you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, deliberate and just as for all.
Thank you. Now Clerk Snyder, if you could get the roll, please.
Alderman Nichols. Alderman Isenach is absent. Alderman Zevnik. Alderman Perkins. Alderman Lewis. Alderman Marshall. Alderman Grady. Alderman Repella. Seven are present.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to D, which is Public Hearing, and we have one special use permit for 1,110 Midway Road, parcel number 5-00908-01. Community Development Director Schrader, would you like to just give a little context?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. So, under section 7.1-1, licensed kennels within the City of Manassia shall be established when or whereupon five or more dogs are kept old, boarded, groomed, sheltered within the City of Manassia. So before a kennel license can be applied for, that does trigger a special use permit through the Community Development Department. So that section of code is slightly different than the zoning code, however, it does basically follow that same process. So, we did look back at similar facilities, at what we've done in the past, and those have also gotten a special use permit. So staff did believe this was the best way to move this project forward. So 1110 Midway Road is the old Aspen Market. Basically, they are looking at just leasing a space within that facility. So they will be kind of, again, locating this in there. It is intended to be more of an outpatient veterinarian clinic, so it's not a full kennel, but because those animals may be kept there and basically cared for there, we did want to follow that same process. So again, staff did review this against the special use permit criteria. We did have this in front of our City Plant Commission, who did recommend approval of the special use permit. So as basically stated in the packet, both staff and Plant Commission recommend the Common Council approve the special use permit to obtain a kennel license as presented for Transcend Veterinary Clinic.
Thank you. Does anyone else, excuse me, does anyone wish to speak during the public hearing for the special use permit? Yeah, if you could please just step up to the mic and then state your first and last name, address, and then share all your thoughts on it.
My name is Dr. Alyssa Dankers with a D. Address is 2002 North Perkins Street in Appleton, Wisconsin. I just want to speak on behalf of the special use permit. I'm the veterinarian that is starting Transcend Veterinary at that place, so I just wanted to say if anyone had any, if there needed to be any clarification throughout this process, myself and my husband wanted to be here for it. And just thank you for considering it. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the public hearing? Going once, going twice, final ask, and it appears that nobody else wants to speak, so we will close the public hearing and we'll move on to item E, which is Report of Department Officers, Department Head Staff and Consultants. Excuse me, consultants, is there a motion? Alderman Zevnik.
I'd like for the council to approve the minutes A through H and Communications I, J, and K.
Motion was made by Alderman Zevnik, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next is item F, which is Public Comments on Any Matter of Concern to the City. We just asked that you step up to the podium, state first and last name, address, and you have five minutes to speak. Does anybody wish to speak? Anybody seeing none? We'll move on to G, which is Consent Agenda. Is there a motion? Alderman Zevnik.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the Common Council Minutes of 8/1924.
No second.
Motion was made by Alderman Zevnik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we'll move on to item two, which is Board of Public Works. Is there a motion? Alderman Zevnik.
Thank you. At this time, the Board of Public Works approved and recommended to the council payment to Callan and Gauze LLC. This is a contract unit number 2024-06. This is utility and street construction of $233,530.47.
Is there a second?
No second.
Motion was made by Alderman Zevnik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, one.
Next is three, Change Order Under Board of Public Works. Is there a motion? Alderman Zevnik.
Again, the Board of Public Works unanimously decided that we would go along with the Change Order to Yankee General Contractors Incorporated. This is Change Order Number 2024-08. This is the Water Street Corridor Reconstruction. The addition is $16,251.24.
No second.
Motion was made by Alderman Zevnik, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Alderman Grady.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just one question for Deputy Director Youngworth, I'm sorry.
I thought we heard someone over.
I don't know if we can replace her, but we'll try. Anyway, Laura, is this normal? I mean, is there going to be something else with the gas lines or connections or anything? Okay.
This was a workaround in one specific location that was along the new wall. Basically, we had to go back to the drawing board and kind of redesign to shift the wall a bit to accommodate the gas main that we ended up encountering. So, this was a one-time situation. We certainly hope that we do not have any more conflicts as we progress.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. Next is four, which is a payment under the Board of Public Works. Is there a motion? Alderman Zevnik.
I'd like for us to approve the payment for Yankee General Contractors Incorporated. This is Contract Unit Number 2024-08. This is the Water Street Corridor, again, reconstruction, in the amount of $391,939.53.
Motion was made by Alderman Zevnik and seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Next is item five, which is for the Administration Committee. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve selection of dividend option number one and instruct to the city's and village's mutual insurance company staff regarding payment of dividends to Manassia on or after March 1st, 2025.
Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Next is item six from the Plant Commission. Is there a motion? Alderman Lewis.
Motion to approve the special use permit to obtain a kennel license as presented for Transcend Veterinary LLC at 110 Midway Road, parcel number 4-00779-02.
Is there a second? I don't think that was the correct parcel number.
Point of order.
Alderman Nichols.
There is one parcel number listed in the memo that contains staff recommendation, which she is reading from, and there is another parcel number, a different parcel number, on the agenda. So that's where the confusion is coming from.
Which one is the correct?
Thank you. Community Development Director.
Our apologies on that. So looking it up, it should be parcel 4-00779-02, which would be...
That's what she said.
The one in the middle.
Correct. All right, thank you for the point of clarification or point of order. Is there a second?
No second.
Motion was made by Alderman Lewis, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Next is seven from the Plant Commission. Is there a motion? Alderman Zevnik.
I've been asked to do this one because there is a slight change, and I did give the change to the clerk. Oh, wait, not on this one. It's Fairview, you have it. So, the motion would be that the Planning Commission reviewed the preliminary plat and that they're recommending to the Common Council that the Fairview Drive...
Field View.
Field View, sorry. Now you got me. It's still Sand Hill Lane Preliminary Plat as presented, finding that the plat conforms to the municipal ordinance, the city comprehensive plan, and surrounding developments with the following conditions. One, add a permanent five-foot roadway construction easement along the east and west right-of-way of... Is it still Sand Hill Lane or...
Field View Drive.
Okay. As long as the clerk gets this and the council understands. Item, condition two, is that the designation of the planned unit development for this land shall be approved. Three, the zoning from C3 General Commercial District to the PUD Planned Unit Development District shall be approved. And four, the development modified paragraph 3.2 of the PUD narrative to provide an exception on the front setback of Lot 4, and to add language to paragraph seven, that the Stormwater Pond would be owned by the property owners of the Sand Hill Landing condominiums and maintained by the Sand Hill Landing Board, and any signage would be owned and maintained by the Sand Hill Landing Board. Do we add anything about the Fairview Drive?
If I may speak, if that's okay.
It's up to the mayor.
Acceptable. Okay. Thank you. I did ask Alderman Zevnik just before this meeting to add that one condition that I take full fault in this, not adding to the Plant Commission agenda, would be because the road is a proposed right-of-way and it is Field View Drive, basically extended south, we would want to continue that road name through.
So would that be condition five?
That would be probably an additional condition, yes. That we would, and they can stay with the Sand Hill condominiums or whatever their development name is, but we would want the road within the right-of-way to be renamed Field View Drive rather than Sand Hill.
That would be condition five, then.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Alderman Zevnik, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Clerk Snyder, were able to get that?
I can get it to you. For clarification, clerk, for your benefit, so basically reading it off of the Plant Commission Minutes, and then adding a fifth condition, Sand Hill Lane shall be changed to Field View Drive. There was a one modification under paragraph one where it called out Sand Hill Lane, so again, Alderman Zevnik was just addressing that as Field View Drive.
Okay. She's good. I just wanted to make sure because there's a different conversation. We'll move on to discussion. Alderman Repella.
Thank you very much. Sam, I'm disappointed it wasn't Repella. Wait, but please explain the street width, if there's any parking issues on that street. Will vehicles be able to get down that street if there's cars on both sides of the road, or is there just going to be parking on one side, or how are you going to, how is that going to be dealt with?
Per the PUD, per the PUD plan that was presented to the Plant Commission, which that stuff will be brought forward to County Council as well as part of the rezoning, there would be no parking allowed on that street. So it would be a 24-foot back-to-back curb with a 29-foot right-of-way with no parking on the street. Basically, you're looking at all the driveways anyways, there just wouldn't be a lot of room to park in that regard, so that is kind of where that is transpiring. The reason we wanted to bring a preliminary plat through first is because the public hearing requirements for the rezoning require that Class II notification, so that has to lag another meeting, so at that next Common Council meeting, we will be seeing that. But by getting the preliminary plat through, then we're able to kind of start the final plat process at Plant Commission and just keep this project moving forward.
So if some, thank you, but so if somebody has a birthday party, there will be not, no parking on that street, correct? I mean, so then, where will they park?
So there is a two-sol garage attached to each unit, as well as the width of the driveways allow for two vehicles to park in front of that garage.
Okay, so they have to have small parties.
Small parties.
Small parties. Okay. All right, understood. Thank you.
Any other discussion, Alderman Repella?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Yep. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we can move on to a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. Next is item eight, NINA Manassia Joint Finance and Personnel Commission. Is there a motion? Alderman Zevnik.
Thank you. We had a meeting last week, and it was recommended by the NINA Manassia Fire Rescue Committee that we direct the NINA Manassia Fire Rescue staff and the NINA HR Director Fairchild to complete an in-house comprehensive position classification study for the NINA Manassia Fire Rescue administrative non-union positions.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Zevnik, seconded by Alderman Marshall. Is there any discussion? All right, Alderman Zevnik.
Thank you. As you noticed, we eliminated the last sentence in there. That was, the motion that we made in committee was the one that I made, and that's good with the chief.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Chief Tesh, could we pass the microphone back to Chief Tesh, please? Thank you so much. Could you explain briefly why these, why this recommendation is here right now?
Yep. This started when we posted the job for the Assistant Fire Chief Fire Marshal. As you would routinely expect, when we posted for that, we took a look at what the job description actually said. We made some modifications to that. One modification withstanding yet is the move from an associate degree to a bachelor's degree or equivalent experience for that. Because that has a financial impact, we thought we should study this and bring it forward. So that kind of started with the fire commission, and from there went to the Joint Finance Committee. And the goal or the help is to move the department towards accreditation, not just for the officer staff, but for the department as a whole, and to address some compression issues that we have between administrative staff and represented staff.
Okay, thank you for that. So, I think what I heard is that the associate degree remains the qualification for the open position at this time, and there is consideration of changing that in the future to a bachelor's degree.
That is correct.
Okay. And the reason for the in-house study, I think, and you and I had a conversation about this today, is for informational purposes only at this time, in order to collect some data that can help frame the conversation and help us make decisions in the future.
Well said. It's exactly that. It's the starting point, it's the first step on the path, and it'll hopefully provide us direction on where to go and continue with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Repella.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, we've had a, by the way, my uncle, 60 years ago, was fire chief, so I am partial to the police and fire departments, as my dad was an officer for almost 30 years. So, we've had a salary study with the city employees, and many of them were, have had an increase in compensation. The police department is having an issue with a new contract, and I'm sure that they're going to want a pay raise and not be frozen at 0% pay raise. Salary studies only bring pay raises. I'm sure you're not going to find that you're going to decrease the rate of pay of the regular firemen and not the lieutenants and the sergeants and all the other upper echelon. We are running out of money in our city with everybody wanting pay raises. Somebody's got to bite the bullet. The Aldermen don't take very much of a pay raise, if any. Maybe that should be reflected in some of you. We don't have much money. We keep raising the taxes of people, and we need to shut her down a little bit and just bite the bullet and say, hey, we're okay working for what they're compensated for, working eight hours and resting or whatever, being on call for the other 16 every day. So, I guess I'm not in favor of any type of pay raises or salary studies because all it does is bring up pay raises. So, thank you.
Is there any? Oh, Alderman Zevnik.
Just to help Alderman Repella a little bit, there was some discussion of doing an outside study, and this is going to be done by a professional, the HR Director in NINA. And it mainly address, helps to address the fire commission's concern about the fact that there was a change made, as the chief alluded to, from associates to a bachelor's degree. And of course, when you do that, it usually involves somewhat of an increase. So, with that, it was, and it's not like there's 300 people or something, you know. So she's going to look at it more comprehensively across the board. And yes, I agree with you, if we found out somehow that, oh, deputy should make less than what he's making now, we usually don't go the other direction. You're correct. We usually go the other direction, which is an increase. But this is really to help that commission out to have a better understanding. They seem very passionate about it, from what we've noticed when we had our meeting. They were very concerned about that one step and that we should do it more of a comprehensive look at this, so I agree with that. So I wouldn't vote against this, I would vote for it because it is in-house, and I think it would put us in a better direction.
Chief, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think that was a very nice summary of what the discussion was, where it started, and what the concerns are. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to I, which is Action Items, and the first is Accounts Payable. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve the accounts payable and payable for the term of August 16th through August 29th, 2024, in the amount of $1,946,942.72.
Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Next is item two for Action Items. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Seeing that all requirements have been met, I move to approve the application for temporary Class B, Class B Retailer's License at Bruzon Bago, September 12th, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Jefferson Park for the Manassia Rotary.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Marshall. Any discussion? Looks like Alderman Grady.
Yes, I'd like to defer the question to the Megan Sackett or Barker Rex Director because I imagine it might be at Barker Farms.
Yes, thank you, Alderman Grady. We are requesting a change of location to Barker Farm Park for this, based on construction timeline and delay due to some weather constraints and supply constraints. We are going to be hosting our last one of the season at Barker Farm Park.
Thank you. Alderman Zevnik.
Yeah, I was looking at the agenda and then looking at the application, and I believe, I thought I saw the application for Barker Farm, so...
Correct. It will be at Barker Farm.
Okay, so...
We were hopeful that we could hold it at Jefferson Park, but like I said, due to some delays, we're just not going to be able to.
So as a friendly amendment, we'll just say Barker Farm, if that's okay with the rest of the body.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. Next is item three. Is there a motion? Alderman Zevnik.
At this time, I don't think we need to take any action. I think mainly it was to see if the fence was picked up at this point. I know that Thad Brown had gone out there and made certain that the fence was up and everything should be in order. As far as the other issues, those can be handled in-house with the attorney, the Community Development Director, and any alderman that wants to be involved.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? All right, and then... All right, and then we'll move on. So next would be L, which would be Appointments. Is there a motion? Alderman Perkins.
Yeah, so I would like to approve the mayor's appointment of Carol Sturm to be on the Landmarks Commission for the term of 9/4/24 through 3/1/27.
Motion was made by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it passes. Next would be N, Public Comments on Any Matter List on This Agenda. Is there anyone in the gallery that wishes to speak? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to O, Items for the Next Meeting Agenda. Is there anything? All right. So Alderman Zevnik, are you making a motion to have that on the next agenda?
Yes.
And then is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Zevnik, seconded by Alderman Marshall. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, actually, should I have done a roll call vote for that? I apologize. Can we do a roll call, redo the vote with a roll call vote, please?
Then we have to add.
Motion carries five two.
All right. And then is there anything else for O? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to... Yep, Alderman Nichols? It's frozen. Just one second, please. All right. Sorry about that. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I've had many questions about what's happening with the Manasha 150 celebration, so an update from the Susquehannial Committee would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Do you want an update or a memo or something from them for the next agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Item O.
All right. Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote in just a moment, then.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. And then just on that note, Weekend was recently picked. Working on a press release for the dates of October 11th and 12th, but we'll have something prepared for the next agenda. Is there anything else? Alderman Nichols? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to P, which is adjournment. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Lewis. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we adjourn at 6:33. Thank you.
The City of Manasha is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manasha residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www-manashawi.gov. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manasha issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-3608. Contacting their city alderman, contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.